Please note that this meeting will be screened. Is there any disclosure of community interest or here in nature to hear of? No? There's no public hearing. We have one delegation from Yellin's Law. And we're getting a splash pad. Come up to the podium and tell us what you want to tell us.
Right now or later?
You're right now.
So I'm proposing actually for the town of Espinola to do a little splash pad. For the simple fact, there's a lot of things that are missing in this town and one of them would actually require something for children. We don't see a heck of a whole lot for the kids. A lot of them are running the streets. They're not, they're not actually active in the public like traffic field or... There's many, many children out in our communities that cannot afford to do extracurricular activities. And a splash pad is one of the ideas that I have been thinking about for a few months and I've been looking into and the costs and the fundraising and the size and the patient as well as what, what it would actually do for Espinola. I've done research. Sudbury alone has over 14 of them. Gore Bay has one. Elliott Lake has them as well as the recurrent. The only place that doesn't have one really is Espinola. We have enough children for a splash pad. At the same time, it's eco-friendly. It's all on sensors. It's going to be built by a company if it, if it does get approval. It'll get built by a company that actually does it eco-friendly. Everything's done on sensors. The town would have control as to when and what the times are for the actual splash pad to be operating. One of the proposed areas that I had thought of was by the complex because I am aware that Dennis Landstrom is actually doing a project there as well for children with special needs. So I talked to Dennis about it as well and he believes that it's a great idea as well to go ahead and bring this to council as well. So I talked to him. I've talked to a bunch of other people. I've started a Facebook page and quite a few people are asking why Espinola still hasn't had that. So I went ahead and told them that, you know, I'm going to go to the town council and see if I can get approval and we can get the ball rolling on this once we get approval. I have a major background in fundraising for like nonprofit charities and stuff like that. So that's something I can bring to the table as well. I do have a team of people who is dedicated to actually making sure this happens. If we get denied, we're going to just, a heads up, we're coming back again and again and again. So if you get on your last nerve. And we're actually looking at, there's different grants available through the federal government. There's a whole list based on the package I received from the company where people are actually looking at giving grants for such play structures. So that's something that I would like to look into as well once we do get approval. The cost of this splash pad right now that we're looking at is $220,000 and that there plus taxes and any kind of connections. Now that cost can actually get reduced if we actually have help from the community to help build the actual structure. It'll reduce that actual cost. The size of this splash pad we're looking at is 2,697 square feet. And with that size, I know that there's a nice fair-sized area close to the complex, which will actually also allow to draw people into the complex as well if kids have to change. You know, it'll bring more attractions to the complex as well. At the same time, this splash pad here, we can actually change it up, make it bigger, make it smaller. If we go smaller, of course, the cost is going to go lower. The connections are all available at the complex. We don't have a connection to which water lines. And just here. They do have deadlines for all of their grants as well, which I could apply for. I do know and I am aware that the town will be responsible for all of the monies coming in and making sure everything's taken care of, which I'm okay with. We've had a few people ask about if I can take accept donations and stuff like that, which I would do, but it would be paid directly to the town for the main cause of this splash pad. I have been approached by a few people who wanted to go ahead and add like bigger structures, rocks and stuff like that to the actual splash pad. However, because of accessibility, this will, this splash pad here is on a flat level. So people in wheelchairs, children with disabilities will be able to go ahead and use this as well. So there's no limitations on who can and can't use it. I mean, heck, if even the adults want to have a party, by all means, I mean, your tent, you know, whatever. But I mean, I'm just saying that Espinola is really lacking on this and I mean, I've seen like the fireball blow up and I mean, those are needed things. However, I'm finding there's not enough in town for the children. So I'm not sure if that's something you would be interested in looking in or improving. Again, I'm willing to go ahead and have the team work on this. It will not cost the town a single dime except for the space wherever we're getting it done. And we're going to be doing fundraisers. I've also reached out to the Lions Club. I've reached out to quite a few different clubs and different companies and businesses as well as there'll be some local small businesses that are willing to go ahead and do fundraisers as well. So there would be no cost to the town for this project. That's pretty much it.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you very much. Any questions?
No, just want to thank you.
I just have a couple of questions. You said that if the community helps, then we can burn the cost down. What did you mean by that?
Well, if they help with the build, like the construction, the main build of the splash pad, because it takes five business days for it to be completed. And if we end up having like, let's say, five or 10 community members that say, you know what, I'm going to help build. It's almost like the habitat for a community. If they come and help build, it will reduce the cost for us again. So as soon as we have more people on hand that are willing to volunteer, that will reduce the cost of the splash pad.
Okay. And you don't happen to have any idea about what insurance or anything would be like for that because we would have to carry that?
Yeah, not at the moment because I'm not sure as to what size and like the space and that. I have to go and lap it out, see how big it'll be. If the size is an issue, all that stuff. Like I don't want to go ahead and make any kind of like inquiries to insurance companies until I know for sure that it's been approved and as well as what the size is, where it's going, all the details of it. Because the splash pad right now we're looking at is a 2,700 square feet roughly and it could actually go bigger or smaller. So I'm not sure how much of a liability insurance we would have to carry for something like that.
And are there other splash, sorry. Are the other splash pads in the other locations, do they not have to have a qualified guard on duty when they're open?
No. See, the thing is that a lot of those places, they're under surveillance by cameras or even have parents. So a lot of those places are actually being monitored by other parents. They're not close to, I don't think they're, I mean, this splash pad would not be close to any kind of water, holy water source. So I mean, there's no risk of drowning or anything like that. But with those splash pads on the island, I believe the one on the Manitouland Island is close to a water source. So they may have a large guard on duty there based on it being close to the water. Now I do know Sudbury has 14 of them, like so spread out throughout Sudbury. Elliott Lake has one. Gore Bay has one.
Please don't perceive that I'm not interested because I am very interested. I just need to have some answer to some of those questions.
Oh yeah, go ahead. Ask any question. I mean, I don't care how long it takes, I mean, you know.
Anybody else have some question before we move on?
No.
What's the cost of maintenance?
Uh, the maintenance all depends on the use. So it's kind of like, a lot of them, the mechanisms and the sensors and that, they're pretty, they're very well-built. So that's not an issue with it. A lot of the parents I've noticed and some of the splash pads go in and they check on it, maintain it and stuff like that. So it would probably be something towards public works, which would probably be most likely very rare because I mean, I can't see there being any reason why they would have to go in and clean it consistently. So the maintenance for like actual repairs and stuff, I haven't really seen very much of maintenance required on most of them.
Anybody else have any questions? Maureen?
I think your proposal would probably be better suited going to community services. We're going to assume, Cynthia, if I'm not wrong, would public works also need to do a report on there?
Yeah, that would be up to the chair to, to defer to community services and ask for a report on that.
That is what I would say.
What I was going to say is we, you know, it, just for your information, all the equipment in the playgrounds is overdue, okay, around, around the community. So we're, we've created, we've got a community services group and we created a recreation committee to turn around and look at some of these issues, okay? Make sure we rationalize these in a, in a good manner so we're, we're, we're thinking about reading the needs of everybody in the community. I happen to have taken my daughter to a splash pad in Valcaren. My, my two grandchildren, they're, they're turned two in April there and they didn't really want to run through the water. But in Valcaren, they had their community center and they have a little road to take them through a parking lot. Right across there, they had a playground with the rubber matting and wheelchair access up to the playground equipment. And on the other side, they had a splash pad and they had a gazebo and they had a few benches around that you could sit and watch children. It was a nice little setup.
Yeah. That's something I'm considering as well because a lot of people have mentioned that we need shade for the children. They're out in the sun, they're going to get burned, they can't keep their sunblock on. Another thing that was mentioned was the potential of any extra funding that we would receive, any extra income money donations we would use to go ahead and purchase artificial trees, like something to provide shade for the children as well as benches, just to decorate it up a little bit. So this way your parents can actually stay and supervise the children at the same time. So it's not like it's just splash pad, boom, that's it, that's all, we're done. What we want to do is actually look into getting artificial plants, trees that just to make, beautify it a little bit and also give the children shade at the same time because we don't want them to get sunburned. So that's another part of the splash pad that I was asked, what's going to happen with the additional funds? And I said, well, we could beautify it, we can go ahead and put some benches in, artificial trees, plant shrubs, just something to go ahead and add additional shade for the children and make them feel more comfortable when they're playing in the splash pad.
Okay, so, okay, well, thank you very much, okay? And I don't know if we need a motion to ask if we have community services needing to look at that or, or rationalize the parts and cap, okay? Do we need anything like that or can we just get, issue a staff, uh, direction there to have staff to organize to have a review?
So, you're trying to give staff direction or give direction because I guess come back to community services with report from staff on, you know, reporting public works. Perhaps we could comment on the insurance implications.
Now, one thing Jill Beer also, I had talked to Mrs. Beer and she has informed me as well, she will be donating a percentage of her wages towards the splash pad once it becomes approved. So that's another thing that...
Okay, so is everybody happy with giving that type of direction to staff? Okay. Okay, that's record, we're deflected. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Question period. Any questions? Okay, part one consent agenda and just for your information, the, the minutes that were published had one hammer home there as it was councillor Hayden showed up to be present and people were made to that, so they've corrected it there. So you're aware of that. Okay. Present.
So the resolution moved by councillor Hayden, seconded by councillor Duthy. It resolved that items A1 to F6 inclusive containing part one consent agenda be adopted.
Okay, so let me re-read that. Are there any questions on A1? I sort of covered that one, one fraction, I think. Or anything else? If not, we'll move on to board and committee reports, recommendation and total advisory committee meeting that made from the first to the next. Any questions on that? Matters arising from cameras, there are none. This is arising from board and committees, there is none. E1 bylaw, 2930 slash 19, bylaw to be adopted, being a bylaw the town could furnish proceedings as a previous meeting. Anything there? Recreation, recommendation regarding sale of property be resolved that bylaw be adopted, being a bylaw to authorize sale of municipal property. Reports, there was a public works department, report for June, fire department report, leisure services report, economic development report, POA department report and a legal report for information. Are there any questions relating to any of that?
I have one on the public works department. Is the number 13 triaxle truck that was down from February the 4th, has that been recovered yet?
I will have some questions.
In relation to that, I have one other question to ask relating to that. How did that impact our operations? Is that a truck that's used maybe in the winter or, or we've gone through most, like spring and summer, but there are, there was just one that had the operations. And go ahead there, Maureen.
F6, in part of that report, it says that they also received a complaint regarding the bylaw enforcement officer procedure. Has that been resolved or?
If no one's aware of that right now, we'll have staff send an email to the pad as well.
Okay, thank you.
I had one item too. There was a fireball on water supply and then just temporary, as you mentioned in the report, because that had a containment problem or maybe just as we started the commission, there was something here.
Sorry, again, I don't know if I should ask them this often.
Yeah, okay, so you can add that to the answers. Okay? So, okay, so any more questions relating to these reports? If there's none, I'll read the resolution. Moved by Sandra Hayden, seconded by Ken. Can due proceedings be resolved in items A1 and F6 inclusive containing part one consent agenda be adopted? All those in favor? Next panel? E1 of this?
Yes, the part two, the regular agenda, moved by councillor Duthy, seconded by councillor Hayden. It resolves that bylaw 2981 slash 15, being a bylaw to adopt a zoning bylaw amendment to remove the holding categories category from the affected lands, part one to eight, part of concession four, part of pin 73406 dash 0256 on plan 53R 21121, and part eight, part of broken lot eight, concession four, part in 73406 0256 on plan 53R 21032.
Okay, any questions or comments on this? My understanding is that because they, with the building of Redwood Billy there, they paved the road and committed to down there part of the project and that's why this is now being taken off the whole?
So, so phase one, yes. So the first portion of that road, we're removing that. The category of the road is finished and it's been shown to us. The infrastructure is...
Anything else there? So we the resolution again, moved by Ken, seconded by Sandra. It resolves that bylaw 2931 slash 19, being a bylaw to adopt a zoning bylaw amendment to remove the holding category from the affected land, part one to eight, part of concession four, part of pin 73406 dash 0256 on plan 53R 21121. And part eight, part eight of broken lot, called as concession four, part of pin 73406 dash 0256 on plan 53R 21032.
Okay. G2, moved by councillor Hayden, seconded by councillor Duthy. It resolves that bylaw 2932 slash 19 be adopted, being a bylaw to grant a certificate of validation under section 57 of the planning act.
Any questions or comments? If there's none, I'll read it again. Removed, moved by Sandra, seconded by Ken, be resolved that bylaw 2932-19 be adopted, being a bylaw to grant a certificate of validation under section 57 of the interior planning act.
G3, moved by councillor Law, seconded by councillor Van Alstun. It resolves that bylaw 2933 slash 19, being a demure bylaw for law consolidation of rule 5226 000 006 15800 000, pin 73407, F0556, concession five, lot eight, plan M75, lot 113, parcel 9426. Town West Nola 575B will no longer be part of a plan subdivision and therefore be consolidated with the property legally known as rule number 5226 000 006 15700, F0020, pin 73407, F0543, concession five, lot eight, plan M75, lot 114, parcel 8521, Town West Nola 571, need for it to be adopted.
Okay. And G3, is this resolution, any comments or questions?
Yeah, that was part of the laneway, wasn't it?
No, it's a separate lot.
Oh, it is a separate lot?
Yeah, so there's two lots there. One has a hole on it.
Yes.
The other one's made, I think there was a hole in it. It's a little less like that.
Oh, okay.
But it's two, it's two separate lots.
Okay, thanks.
And you had a picture in the, you had a photograph of the camera. It looks like that's where the garage probably was. The bylaws can put a garage, that's probably providing room for that. Okay, all those in favor? Next panel, do you have?
E4, moved by councillor Van Alstun, seconded by councillor Duthy. It resolves that leisure services proceed with replacement of a full-time line.
Any questions or comments?
G5, moved by councillor Rizan Law, seconded by councillor Van Alstun. It resolves that whereas there are about 4,000 children living in Kansas, Ontario, and each year about 400 new cases are diagnosed, and whereas the cases of cancer in children largely are known, and whereas one in 285 children are diagnosed with malignant cancer before their 20th birthday, and whereas in Canada, childhood cancer remains responsible for more deaths from one year, from one year through adolescence than any other disease, killing one in four children affected by this disease. And whereas childhood cancer crosses all racial, ethnic and social boundaries, and whereas an estimated one-third of a family's after-tax income is spent on treatment-related expenses due to lack of available treatment options for the inhabitants of Northern Ontario. And whereas dedicated organizations such as Northern Ontario families of children with cancer and volunteers are working diligently to raise funds in order to improve the lives of Northern Ontario families during and after their journey through childhood cancer by providing essential programs and financial services and by letting the families know they're not alone in their battle. Whereas the town of West Nola recognizes the devastating effects of childhood cancer. Whereas this, well, and whereas September in Espinola, we pay tribute to the healthcare professionals, researchers, private philanthropies and parent advocacy groups who collaborate to provide hope and help. Patients and families affected by pediatric cancer will make vital contributions to the ongoing search for cures. Now therefore, council said Town West Nola hereby proclaim September 2019 as childhood cancer awareness month in Espinola and encourages residents to show their support of this cause by increasing awareness, speaking up about childhood cancer, wearing the color gold and reaffirming our commitment to fighting childhood cancer.
Okay, any comments or questions? All those in favor? Next panel, G7? Ms. Baller, I think.
G6. And G6?
Oh, excuse me, yeah, sorry.
All right. Moved by councillor Mala, seconded by councillor Duthy. It resolves that bylaw 2934 slash 19 be adopted, being a bylaw to execute agreement between the town of Espinola and the ministry of transportation under the Canadian Canadian Act.
Just a, I have a question here. That takes us from where we found the paving right through to the cross from the Canadian Tire, the end of the Polo Drive, or where does that construction?
So it's kind of from the Polo to the front of the car.
Just a scratch?
Yeah.
Okay, so it doesn't take us from Second State, it's just a little scratch there?
Can't afford that.
Ken?
Was that determined to be the worst area?
Go ahead.
So, no, we had talked about it previously and we were going to originally apply for a different section, but because there was so much water and sewer with the other sections and there's no funding for that under the connecting program, so that's why that sort of section was selected with the least amount of water and sewer, so it did the funding the best.
Thanks.
And if I understand correctly, we apply for two sections of the road and this is a black bar and for 3D dollars and 80% of our cost.
Yeah, and just to clarify, the other section of the road that we had applied for was under a different program and that was the street that passed the, this people, that was the one around.
Now, this one, is this going to also accommodate that new build in the Canadian Tire facility?
Well, it will be completely separate, there will be changes as well.
Thank you.
Great.
Are we to get to the other part at some point or?
No, we're applying for money, okay? We can either do it on our own dime or wait till we, if it's not absolutely terrible, wait to get a grant for most of it.
Yeah, because it is absolutely terrible, but I'm...
We're applying for money, okay? And when we get a grant, we're trying to happily roll this. Any more questions? All those in favor?
G seven, moved by councilor Ben Alston, second by councilor R. Law. It resolves that the Town of Westonola, seeking an attorney lawyer, furthermore, that we contact our integrity commissioner, the role of J. Swayze, or list of possible candidates, and furthermore, that staff contact the list of possible interested lawyers provided by R. Swayze, and request they submit their references, if interested, and furthermore, that this be brought to council for review and possible selection by September ten.
Any questions or comments? I have one. We, right now, we, we've got a bunch of different lawyers that we use, we get their expert in the area. Is this to replace all these experts, or is this for general inquiries that, that we play to, well, we just want some general information, and, and we do that? So, we, like, for example, police services has a law firm that, that was used, and we're still continuing to use them, or things relating to police services, because they're experts in that field. When we sold, uh, or we're in the process of selling Espinola Hider, I was, some experts, it's lawyers who were involved in that, so that's what we've been doing to quite some extent. So, this lawyer, what expect, what do we expect them to do?
Hopefully, to consolidate as much as possible, uh, but not replace the one for the police services board. I haven't seen anywhere there's others, uh, that are as experienced as the ones we have with the police services board. I did go online, though, and look up one that was based out of Aurelia, a Russell Christie, and by the looks of it, uh, they have various areas that they cover. So, generally, what I'm looking for is, is, uh, one firm that can do as much as possible. This is one that are, it's available online.
What point is something else with that?
Exactly. So, just try to streamline so that we're having one lawyer, uh, for as much as possible, so that we don't have a whole bivvy of what we have. That's what I was looking for, anyone else can comment?
Can I ask why it matters?
Just to streamline them, you're dealing with one firm.
But, I mean, everybody's, we're doing specialized things for, we need a lawyer for this thing, then we have that specialized lawyer. Does it really matter who the lawyer is, as long as it's a good lawyer and they're doing their job? I'm just curious, I mean, I'm sure there's a reason, I'm just asking because I'm curious.
Well, that's, sorry. Well, it was just what I explained, Sandra, and it's open for discussion.
Okay.
Great.
Yeah, I, I think we're just looking for a corporate lawyer to help in generalizing some of the questions we may have, may or may not have to them, but it needs to be a municipal lawyer.
Of course.
Uh, because they're more aware as to what's going on in this part.
What my concern is, I don't have a problem selecting a general municipal lawyer, but, but a lot of them have experience where we want some specialized expertise there, and we don't want to have somebody drawn up, let's say, uh, let's say, uh, our, our town, development corporation, okay? We want to, we don't want to give that out to anybody, we want to have an expert in the field who...
That's right.
Who does that type of thing. So, we're not going to replace all these experts, but I thought we're going to try to consolidate.
Yes, that's what I'm looking for.
Yep. Any more questions or comments?
Can I just get some clarity?
Yes.
I'm just wondering, um, so are you looking for a firm to have on retainer, or is there an expectation in that respect? I'm just wondering, or just one-off inquiries, but using the same firm? I, I know, um, I'm familiar with the Russell Christys, I'm just wondering, I, I know some community will put on my, for a municipal lawyer, this law firm, I'm not sure if it does it for the driving laws, or just get names and...
Well, yeah, probably an RFP would be the, the wise thing to do, it doesn't mean say we have to accept them or whatever, but we would like to have, to have more accessibility to one for, but like we said, we don't want to do away with the experts we already have, but we would like to consolidate, uh, and only have as few as possible.
Okay, so, if we pass this resolution, uh, that's basically what we're looking for is to them to get an idea what these services are, and maybe someone's got some expertise in an area that might, that might be useful, and, uh, but, uh, okay. So, all those, any more discussion on this item? All those in favor of the motion? Gary? You understand, we're not looking to get somebody to cover everything, we're going to try to get someone on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay.
G eight, moved by councilor Law, second by councilor Ben Alston. It resolves that health departments submit their twenty-twenty budgets in dollar amounts only by November first, two thousand nineteen, in line-by-line format, using electronic or paper format, which is to include the two thousand nineteen budget and actual amounts in dollar, in dollars only. Furthermore, that these same budgets be presented to council in line-by-line items as above on or before November sixth, two thousand nineteen, in either electronic format or paper, and furthermore, that the first budget meeting be honored before November third, with the eighteen percent finalized of the budget by March first, twenty-two.
Any questions or comments? I would, go ahead, Ken?
Uh, just my concern is, uh, sometimes we can't, and it's happened this year, we can't finalize the budget by March first because of the grants, uh, so I just want to make sure that we're able to be flexible at that point.
Yeah. What I'm looking at is the ones, the parts of the budget that we have control over. Uh, we have no control over education, no control over social services, but the other ones, if we could get them down to just about finished by that, that would be great, so we have an idea of what we're going, because, uh, when I'm looking at what we have later on tonight in our period to date for the month of June, um, I've got some concerns in that area.
Okay. I'd like to make a comment, okay? Uh, rather than a, a specific motion, uh, I think we should roll this into budget policy, and the reason for that is, is if we have a budget policy, staff pulls that up and says, okay, this is, this is what's expected of us, providing that for the budgeting process. If I have to go to all the resolutions that council passed, uh, in the past, and it's not built into budget policy, we're, they're going to miss something. Let's say the C O. Retires, or a treasurer retires, or whatever, and you have some new faces on the table, they're not going to know that five years ago, you passed a resolution to do this or that. So, we have a corporate services meeting coming up, okay? And, and I think we should, I would like to defer this, this, and defer the motion period, and address it as, as an item on the agenda for, to discuss budget policy.
That's fine, I have no problem.
Okay, is that, is that all right with everybody? I don't know, we need a motion to defer, or we can just, uh...
So, I would pass this motion deferred, and specifically deferred to corporate services in September.
So, we'll defer the, do I need to rewrite the motion?
No, so, pass it, and then defer, and then a directive, direction being to, to, uh, the bill direction, to have it go through.
Okay. So, we have a motion, just to make sure I get this right, we have a motion to defer this, all those in favor? And we'll add it to, as a direction from staff, we'll add this item, we'll add, we'll bring up budget policy for the, for our September corporate services meeting, and that would be one of, uh, an item on the budget, we can just, or on the agenda, we can discuss that.
Okay.
Okay?
G nine, moved by councilor Ben Alston, second by councilor R. Law. It resolves that council for the Town of Westonola, commit the Espinola Regional Hospital Foundation, hold the voluntary security rules, on Monday, September second, two thousand nineteen, from ten AM to four PM, between Second Avenue and Simon Street, adjacent to the Giant Tiger Park, providing the same security measures are followed as in previous years.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
G ten, moved by councilor Duthy, second by councilor Law. It resolves that council defer the low immiscidity, immiscidity ceiling project pending as repairs.
Any questions or comments?
Um, I read the report going on, and, uh, they gave us option one and option two and the cost to go with it. So, is, is it my correct understanding then that this option number two is going to be, uh, included in their budget for twenty nineteen?
Uh, yeah, this term is, we're going to, you know, investigation into, uh, recommendations and where not forward, that's part of the budget process.
And will they also include, um, by having to defer and, and wait to have this done, the added cost that we could be looking at? Like, are hydro levels going to stay going up? Uh, what are we doing to, uh, uh, watch? Like, last winter, we had a horrific amount of snow, uh, you know, the extra, whatever steps we need to take to mitigate any further damage here?
Um, I know the manager was with the policy, or they keep close around, uh, in the snow on the roof, so.
I think this is some fundamentals related to the building, and, and we don't want to have condensation and, uh, and erosion on our beams, that's what took down a shopping mall in, uh, Elliott Lake, we don't want to get, have that steelwork to corrorate anymore, but we may have already done some step now. So, any more questions or comments? If not, we'll re-read the resolution, re-read the resolution, moved by Ray, seconded by Ken, be resolved that council defer the low immiscidity ceiling project pending rule for repairs, all those in favor? Gary?
G eleven, moved by councilor Duthy, second by councilor Law. It resolves that policy R. Zero five, dash, zero one six three-two, that the, they don't policy be adopted as...
Any questions or comments? Go ahead, Ray.
I read over the policy and what all is covered, and I've got a huge amount of questions in here. Like, I, I see that this was our, originally adopted this motion in twenty-eleven, so it was, like, how many video, uh, surveillance, uh, units are there, where are they placed, who's monitoring them? In here, it talks about them, uh, having to have a log book of everything, uh, like the amount of security and everything in here, if you can't keep them more than thirty days, guidelines for destroying them, like, are we meeting all of these requirements?
So, no, that's why I brought it forward in the first place, right? It was because I attended a webinar and realized that the one gauge policies that we had, uh, from twenty-eleven wasn't in compliance, so that's why I, I'm bringing the revised policy forward, and then once that's in place, we will have the log book. And so, there's approximately fifteen cameras at the complex. I mean, if you've ever been in there, you can see it at the front desk at all, and it's not unusual for a recreation complex.
Yeah.
Have public building to have security.
So, the rec complex is the only place that has videos?
Right now, yes.
Okay, so, like, uh, this is all new to me in this, so would I be, like, way out in the lit field if I said, uh, asked the O P. For a report, like, are we got them in the right places, could they recommend where they should be? Like, am I wrong in thinking something like this? I, I don't know.
I would think that would be a service that the O P. Would provide. I mean, the guidelines are here, and, and I mean, you can go and look for yourselves, and not in any areas that, you know, are, you know, going to washrooms or outside of the building, and, and, uh, they, it's all...
Sandra?
With the people that have stolen, with, like, when there have been guidelines for them to, to follow, do it, like, if they don't, like you just said, you don't put them in inappropriate places, so, like, are, are we, are you worried about where they're located, or?
Well, I'm just wondering, like, like, we're just bringing a policy in now, because what we had didn't, didn't cut it, so I'm just concerned, like, I mean, if we're going to have a policy, I want to make sure that we're doing it the right way, and it's all in the right places, and I do not have any expertise to have any ideas where they should or shouldn't be, so I don't. So, I, I'm really hesitant to pass a policy, and I, I don't understand all of it myself, so that's just my opinion.
I'm in a respect, I mean, that's why we do have staff that, that research, like, those policies.
But really, if we pass it, if we pass this motion, it's up to staff to make this happen, okay? And, and, uh, if we have, if we want to do a little, ask staff to do a little more homework, or, or provide us with a number report, we can do that too, we can ask for a direction from staff, and maybe bring it to corporate services meeting in, in September, but we need to give staff what, what additional information, so they can at least, at least provide the information we want. Would that be fair to say?
I, go ahead, Ray, and then I'll... Okay, well, right now, this is a way better policy than I've seen. We've only had the one page, this is a few pages, it's, it's pretty good, it hits right on, and I'd like to see this enforced, taking the other one out, and if we need any amendments later, we'll, we'll catch up with that, but as for now, I'd like to see this one put in.
I'm in agreeance with, uh, Ray, I, I, I'm aware of, it did a lot of work, and this is excellent, uh, I've had security cameras, I know the policies, and this is excellent, I'd go for it. And I was just going to say that, you know, because she'd gone to the webinar and, and wasn't made aware of the differences in the law, she would, I mean, that's what Cynthia would do, she would make sure that we were compliant, otherwise, she wouldn't have submitted it to us just for, to look, so I, I was going to recommend a thing that we, for sure, go ahead and accept it as it is, and if we need to ask about amendments, they gotta go ahead and do that, doesn't hurt us, we're just an actor, but we need to be protected now, that's true.
Ken, do you have any?
Uh, if we proceed, um, and it's just possible, if we proceed with, um, video surveillance in here, as we're going to, then whoever installs them, possibly get them to look at the complex and see if it located the right spot is, uh, Murray is worried about. If we do that, if not, then we can, we can do what you said, we can proceed that way, and give direction to staff before, and certainly.
Okay, well, it looks like we have a consensus, we want to vote on this right now, so all those in favor of adopting this policy? Okay, it's very? And, you know, we also have correspondence for information only, uh, we have a budget report, we have information that was previously circulated to council, like, and, uh, Lord L. Precisionity, MPO for Plom, connecting link funding, correspondence, provincial policy state review, being ordered, correspondence on the learning, almost been on, uh, the annual report, stewardship of carry correspondence with box funding, convention, conferences and conventions, there's going to be, uh, I don't know, two or three people at, at annual conference next week, with, with, with Warren and, and Jill, and there'll be, With Heather, Marine and Jill. And it'll be talking to the ministry about nursing home and I'm not sure, there's a couple of other items that are on that. So any mayor and council reports? Go ahead.
Can we go back here to the quarter two budget variance report?
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so I, I did email Cynthia because I looked at the report she prepared. And I, one of them that Cynthia is aware of, I highlighted was the fire services. So for 2019, they had budgeted $511,090. And actual to June 30th, they have spent $1,970,915.69. That is 1.459825 over it. Now you said some of this excess money was coming out of reserves. Is reserves gonna cover all that $1,459,000?
And more. Actually, if you look on page one of the budget to actual, it's a conference summary. And if you go down the other fire services, you see that the capital reserve transfers are 1.8 million.
1.8?
Cover off the capital cost of 1.8 million.
Okay.
So it's just been at practice that we do all reserve transfers at the end of the year.
Okay, so further on my comment on this, like, when I was looking at, at this, I know we have reserves. I know we're putting it into the fire department. But when I look at other things that have come up on the budget today, for example, the arena, 300,000 plus for a new roof. We have to put that off next year, but we're pulling 1.8 million out of reserves for the fire department. I personally have a hard time reconciling that.
Can I comment on that? When we approved the fire department, we knew all that money was gonna come out of reserves and we had $7 million of reserves at that point in time. And whether you budget, and we, we budget, we didn't know exactly where the construction was gonna be last year. We just knew that we were gonna pay a chunk of that money in progress payments last year and the rest of it we could pay that, that this year. We did get an accounting from Cynthia on the whole project costs, okay? And that, that should be in the article in, in my opinion.
Like, this is only, this report is for June 30th. They've already spent the whole 2019 budget. So really, we're gonna be pulling even more out of reserves.
No, so construction is completed.
Yeah, but.
Firehouse now open, it's completed. I mean, as of today, I received a, a few final invoices, which I think are I haven't compared to what I actually have reported, but I'm not aware of any discrepancies from what I reported on the firehouse cost. It's just the timing of, of the construction. It didn't occur over 12 months. It occurred in the first half of the year.
Do we have any money in our budget that we can can look at doing any of this work on the arena roof?
Yes, there is a very healthy reserve for the complex. We've been, ever since the loans and mortgages have paid off, we've been putting that amount of the amortization into the, to, to pay for all these. Now, but those, 20 years old, I mean, we, we've been expecting, we knew that it was, was gonna be a significant cost.
We've been putting away around $260,000 a year into claiming that as a depreciation expense or amortization expense. So that's been going into help build up, out of reserves, okay? And, and the money that we approved for this year was $70,000. And we were gonna take that out of, out of the efficiency improvement money that, that the province had given us a part of the 600 and some thousand dollars. And because that, that project was gonna save some money in energy, okay? So we're there to prove energy. So we're not gonna spend that $70,000 this year. Obviously, because we're not, we, we need to do, we actually need to do the ceiling before we actually do do that part of it. And we're gonna have the budget money for next year to do that. Generally, we've been setting aside a vote. And I, I just guessing somewhere around 1.2 to 1.4 million dollars in excess of operating expenses, okay? For, for capital projects. And that would, $300,000 would come out of that or come out of taxation that would require?
Okay, so my other question would be, by waiting till next year is budgeting for that roof, are we potentially leaving ourselves open for more liability if there is any damage? Like, what, what would our liability be? Very limited or very high?
I, I can ask, but I'm, I'm sure that the other manager wasn't concerned about.
The engineering report didn't indicate there were any serious structural issues there, but, but the point was if we don't fix it, we're, we've got condensation on the steel beams and we're gonna, it'll deteriorate.
Yeah, well, that was part of why I was asking. Is it, like, gonna be safe to wait till next year? Or is it something we should be looking at sooner because of the liability? And if we were looking at doing it sooner, do we actually have the money to pay for it? So you're telling me, yes, we have the money to pay for it. So I would like to know that it's not going to cause an increased risk by waiting another six or eight months to have it done.
We'll ask for, is it already, we asked for a staff report for that?
Yeah.
Just a, a question, comment, yes, yes. Just to make sure that we, we have any comments, anything?
Yes, that's real, that's a real concern.
Okay. Heather, this is for council reports and announcements?
I have no announcements. I, I did go to the, the, as well, to the announcement of the, I'm Don'tar.
Sorry.
To Don'tar. And it was, it was good. I, I arrived a little late. And I went up to the boardroom where all the people were and ended up having to stay with them because they didn't want me to let the cat out of the bag. So I arrived a little late. It was good.
Marie?
I have nothing else to say.
Marie?
Uh, yes, we had a conversation in the last little while regarding building permits. And yes, I'd like you to bring that up to corporate services. And also to provide the same background information to all of council.
Yeah.
Okay, and the other thing I had, if I'd like to bring forth a notice of motion. It says, notice of motion, be it resolved that under the Building Code Act 1992, section 7.1, that the corporation of the town of Espinola establish and enforce a code of conduct for the chief building official. Do I have a second to bring?
Well, we're addressing those, one of the items on our, our corporate services again, yes, corporate, code of conduct for staff, okay? And what, what you're actually asking for is we make sure that with the code of conduct for staff, we make sure that we take them care of the chief building.
No, it's a separate.
Separate one for?
Yes, that's what.
It has to.
I'm in a meeting, I'll call you back later.
So we don't have a motion to see if we're good.
So, so, yeah, so, we, we will have this, no discussion, so we'll have it.
Okay, so we'll have those. Be resolved that under the Building Code Act 1992, section 7.1, that's appropriate and established and force a code of conduct for the chief building official. So are we prepared to vote on this motion? Not on the motion, but a, a great big motion of this. All those in favor? Okay, so now we have the motion itself? Yeah.
So this is.
Okay, okay. Okay. Moved by Maureen, seconded by Ray, be it resolved that under the Building Code Act 1992, section 7.1, that the corporation of the town of Espinola establish and enforce a code of conduct of a chief building official. So any comments or questions?
I just wondered, why does it have to be a separate code of conduct?
It's mandated under the Building Code. That they have a code of conduct in there and it refers right to it. It also refers to, I've attached the whole section 7.1 of the Building Code.
Okay.
And it explains in there who, who prepares the code of conduct, who's enforces it, penalties to go with it, everything.
There, I'll read for your information, you're, you sort of asked that. I was given this card out there and that 7.1 says, a principal authority shall establish and enforce a code of conduct of the chief building official on inspectors. So really what we're, we're questioning is, or voting on is whether they create code of conduct for the building and official and, and the inspector.
Okay, sorry if I make.
And that's, and that's in a what?
Does it have to be, why does it have to be separate? Why does it, why can't we put in with everybody?
I'm just curious, like, because of the way it's enforced, that they, the code is enforced by council itself. So it is.
We can make, we can make that a subsection of our code of conduct for staff and have a heading, chief building. Put it all in one document that have a, a separate section for the chief building official. And the inspector.
I'm not sure it says that, but.
It just says, a principal authority established and enforce a code of conduct for the chief building official on inspectors. So it doesn't tell you that you have to have a separate document for staff or the others. You could have one for staff and you could create, you could create three or four codes of conduct depending on what's, what, if there's major differences in the staff. So anyway, it's, we can pass this resolution and we can decide how we, how we.
Yeah, that's what it's asking for.
Okay. Moved by Maureen, seconded by Ray, be it resolved that under the Building Code Act 1992, section 1. That the corporation of the town of Espinola establish and enforce a code of conduct for the chief building. All those in favor? Okay, and future meetings. I have a question, our corporate services meeting is set for September 3rd. That's the day after Labor Day. I would like to defer that by one week if that's alright with, with other people on corporate services.
Doesn't that bring that back to one of our regular meetings then? So it'll be the same day?
Yeah, it would. It would be, we'd have to have that corporate services meeting a little bit before, okay? Or, or do we wanna move it and make it a couple of days later?
I would rather that.
Well, we've got three members of corporate services, Ken, Marine, and I here.
It's fine with me.
Well, I think for staff purposes, where usually you have a report for corporate services at the next council meeting, don't you? Like, if we had, if we had a, a count, a corporate services meeting on the 3rd, that would be included in our, oh, it's not in our agenda?
It used to be, but with the, the timeline, the deadline, it has to go to the next.
Oh, okay. Well, then, on the 10th would be fine. At 4:00.
Do I need a motion for that? Or is it just created that? Okay, so we'll have a corporate services meeting on the 10th. Ken?
I just have a comment, Bill, you need to hear it, and you're not about us?
Yeah.
I have some comments regarding the annual ball tournament here. There's no, they were wondering why, and I don't know if we ever had, but recycled bins at the fields. All the recyclables, one in the garbage, was all in the garbage. Just wondering if we could give that to community service to look at? Thank you.
Didn't we just read something about all the recycling was being, going under review from the government because a large portion of it was ending up in the land of the state? Yeah.
Part of that is because age is not taking a lot of that stuff.
I know, there's problems.
Do you have anything else to say? Oh, yeah, I remember, but I have one, I just need to. Look, I have my ten here. Okay, we have a resolution to adjourn. Moved by Heather, it's up to you, by Ray, be it all of us, if we're going to meeting the council. It's here by you. At 8:05, all of you.